Thank you. Next up is roll call. Would you please start voting? Christie?
We have a quorum with six councilors present. Councilor Gillespie previously requested to be excused.
Thank you, Christie. Next up is the agenda approval. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Christie?
We are going to add a proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Thank you, Christie.
Mayor, with that, I'll make the motion that we approve the agenda as amended. And excuse Councilman Gillespie.
And I second it.
Thank you. Have a motion and second any discussion? If not, start voting, please. Christie?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next up is citizen comment. Alamosa City Council welcomes your comment. Citizens wishing to speak may obtain and complete a speaker card through the city clerk at the start of the meeting. There's a three-minute time limit. Please, when you approach the podium, give us your name and address. Thank you. First up, we have, and the only one, is Dan McCann. Thank you for being here, Mr. McCann.
Thank you for having me. Dan McCann, 1809 Sunset, Alamosa, Colorado. On my street, they finished up the new storm drain a couple of weeks ago. And recently, we had a major rainstorm for a couple of days, and it just came in gangbusters. And that thing really worked. I've got a grate in front of my house, so I know right away if it's working or not. And we taxpayers do get our money's worth around here. And I drove around town, because a lot of that stuff hasn't been completed all over. There were floods all over the place. And if you have a drain in front of your house, it will accumulate plastic bags, branches, and stuff. Try to clean it out to help that drain work. If you do that, it's pretty neat. And by the way, if a flood happens, I just recommend one thing: Get out of the way.
Thank you, Mr. McCann. I don't think we need to follow up on that, do we? Just encourage our citizens to keep their drains clean. Thank you, Mr. McCann. Next up, we have a couple of ceremonial items. One proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, presented by... Would you come to the podium, please, and give us your name? Is this Asha?
Yes.
Yes, Asha Hassel. You better tell me that again.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Asha Holsopple. October has been... I'm the coordinator for the San Luis Valley Anti-Violence Task Force with Tucasa here in Alamosa. And October has been recognized as Domestic Violence Awareness Month nationally for many years now. We know that domestic violence is a huge problem nationwide and in our own community. More than one in three women, at some point in their life, will be a victim of domestic violence, sexual assault, or stalking. And so we have several events going on throughout the month of October to honor it as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And so I brought flyers for you today. We had a lunch and learned today about domestic violence. This Friday, we're having an opening reception at ASU's Nielsen Library for an art exhibit called "Changing Norms: Root Causes of Domestic Violence," where survivors submitted artwork. On next Tuesday, we're having a documentary and discussion night at Malagros. We're going to be showing a documentary entitled "No Place Like Home" that talks about domestic violence and children. And then we'll have a panel discussion afterwards. And on Friday, October 17th, there will be a survivor empathy panel at the S.O.V. Mental Health Center. So yeah, we have a lot of things going on throughout the month.
Thank you, Asha. Well, would you like to say anything, Mrs. Lopes?
No, I'd just like to say thank you for letting us be here tonight. And does the mayor have a copy of the proclamation?
I do, and I will read that.
Okay, wonderful.
All right.
Thank you all for your support. We appreciate it.
Oh, thank you. And so with that, I will read this proclamation. Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender, and income levels, domestic violence is widespread and affects over four million Americans each year. And whereas one in three Americans has witnessed an incident of domestic violence, children that grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a higher rate than the national average. And whereas domestic violence costs the nation's billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity, only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this heinous crime. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy services and assistance to victims, now therefore I, Joseph Lucero, mayor of the city of Alamosa, on behalf of the entire city council and staff, do hereby proclaim the month of October to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Alamosa, Colorado, and urge our citizens to work toward together to eliminate domestic violence from our community, given under my hand and the seal this first day of October 2014. And when I sign this, I will come down and present this to you ladies, and council will come with me. Counsel?
Yes.
Would you like to make a comment, counsel?
Yes, I would like to make a comment, if I could. This is one of the nonprofit organizations that I help volunteer with, and I just want you all to know, if you want to see a real, true definition of commitment to the community, you need to look at this organization and what they're doing in the community. Not only do they have a domestic awareness week or month, they also make the community aware every day and throughout the year. And if you want to see dollars that are donated to organizations being put to the best use, you're looking at the right organization right here. And I want to thank these two ladies right here, Ashley and Asha, for all your hard work and dedication. And I've talked with some of the constituents that you've helped, and the women and men who you've helped, who are victims of domestic violence. So keep up the great work that you're doing. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Coleman. Anyone else? If not, let's go down there and present this. Thank you, counsel. The next proclamation I have is a proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and that is October. I think, as a preface to this, I will say that I'm sure that each and every one of us has been touched by cancer in some form or fashion, whether we have a relative that has it, or we know a friend. We might even have it ourselves. We don't really know. But I think this is an opportunity for us to take a look at the people around us and try to make a difference in some form or fashion, whether we participate in a walk, whether we contribute to a cancer organization of some sort, or anything that we do, just to make people aware that we care, I think is so important. And so with that, I will read this proclamation. Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas October 2014 marks more than 25 years that National Breast Cancer Awareness Month has educated women about early breast cancer detection. And whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is dedicated to increasing public knowledge about the importance of early detection of breast cancer by collaborating with several national public service organizations, professional organizations, and government agencies who work together to ensure that the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month message is heard by thousands of women and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Society estimates in the United States more than 22,000 new cases of invasive breast cancer will be diagnosed in women this year. And whereas the American Cancer Society estimates in the United States more than 2,150 new cases of invasive breast cancer will be diagnosed in men this year. And whereas through research and advocacy, significant advances have been made in the fight against breast cancer, including significant decreases in mortality. And whereas the 2.9 million breast cancer survivors living in the United States today are a testament to courage as well as to the importance of promoting awareness about breast cancer, providing information, funding research, following recommended screening guidelines, and offering treatment to those who are affected, now I, Joseph Lucero, mayor of the city of Alamosa, on behalf of the entire city council and staff, do hereby proclaim the month of October to be Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I will sign this. And I will present it to our city clerk and our city manager. Ladies? Counsel? Thank you, counsel. Next up is Consent Calendar A. The consent calendar allows multiple actions with one motion. Consent Calendar A contains routine items which have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Counsel may remove a consent calendar item for separate consideration. Tonight, we have the approval of minutes of the regular meeting, September 17, 2014. Counsel?
May I move that we approve Consent Calendar A?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on Consent Calendar A? Seeing none? Start voting, counsel. Christie?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next up, we'll move on to regular business. Business brought forward by city staff. Finance. Amanda is here, and she will be visiting with us about Resolution 15, 2014, amending ordinance 13, 2013, for the 2014 budget. Thank you, Amanda.
The resolution in front of you covers the general fund, enterprise fund, and community rec fund. The major items listed under the general fund, 31,600 is for the cost associated with hiring the human resource manager. Some of the training increased for some of those reasons, because this year, we did not create a human resource department. We've left it combined with the city manager. So it's increased some of those overall operations in that area. We are reallocating monies that were originally budgeted in 2013. We talked at our work session the other night that some of those projects needed to be pushed forward into '14. So this is a cleanup for some of those projects. Our software upgrade for ENCODE. It also includes $25,000 that was set aside to be put more towards the Pink Elephant project. It includes the $5,000 that went to economic development as part of the escrow money, and then $17,000 for the purchase of the Monroe right away. In the police administration department, the largest majority of those is increasing some of our operations when we weren't expecting to have to replace our chief of police, our city clerk, some of those items, and some of those that are associated with those overall training opportunities. Streets maintenance, we had one project that was budgeted in 2013 that did not get completed, so that was reallocated in 2014. Enterprise fund, we have unforeseen sewer system infrastructure need that came out to be right around $92,000. Once the end of the construction season finishing up, and we can go through and look at those again, we may or may not need to adjust that again as well before the end of the year. And then, the tennis courts, and the community recreation fund was originally budgeted in 2013. We're pulling it forward for the final completion of that in 2014. And that pretty much sums up the majority and the main parts of that resolution.
Thank you, Amanda. Counsel, do we have any comments or questions of Amanda? Rusty?
If there's no questions, I move that we approve Resolution 15, 2014, amending ordinance 13, 2013, for the 2014 budget.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on Resolution 15, 2014? Seeing none? Start voting, counsel. Christie?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next up, we'll move on to city manager legal. Funding for the Pink Elephant project. Heather?
As ACID has worked on their negotiations for the purchase of Sick and Twisted, we held a closed session in regards to what the role of the city should be, and if there should be an increased role for the Pink Elephant project. At that point in time, counsel indicated that it would be willing to provide an additional $25,000 towards the project. And this essentially just makes that official. As an update, ACID has closed with Sick and Twisted, and they are the current owners of the building, which means they own everything they would need to own. And hopefully, their goal is to work towards demolition before winter time. But we have had discussion, they will give us a timeframe of when that will happen, as well as visit door-to-door for the businesses in that immediate area to make sure they're aware of it and can let their... The people who shop and eat in those locations are aware of it as well. So there will be an extensive outreach once that project moves forward. So for tonight, it's an issue of if counsel would like to make a motion to move forward with the additional $25,000.
Thank you, Heather. Counsel, do we have any questions or comments for Heather? Charlie?
Mayor, I had some comments. I want to thank our city manager for kind of riding on this project, because this has been a project that's been... We've been trying to get this done for, I didn't forget how many years. I bet you close to about five years, a little over, that we've been working on this. Because I think when Nathan came on, our city manager, he was working on it. So it's been taking a long time, and I think this is something that's going to ignite the economic downtown, and it's going to clean up our community, because now that Sixth Street is a major highway through our community. And as they come through there, they see this big, instead of a pink elephant, it's a white elephant out there that we could probably take away and probably clean up. So I want to thank our staff for riding hard on this and making sure it happens. And hopefully, we can knock it down this winter. So, thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Greco. Counselor Coleman?
Yes, Heather. In our closed session, I was under the impression that the extra $25,000 would be for the purchase of that building and not just for the project. Was I wrong in interpreting it that way? And I want to know, what are the funds being used for?
It's somewhat hard to separate it out, in that we have this spreadsheet of what the demolition costs are going to be, what the cost to purchase all of the properties were, and what the remaining amount was for Sick and Twisted. As we reviewed the numbers, it became clear that the gap that ACID had in what the anticipated cost, including to still purchase Sick and Twisted, and what revenues he had, was about $100,000. And so you could say that's a $100,000 gap to purchase the building, or you could say it's a $100,000 gap for some other part of the project. But the funds were needed, and what Randy has done up to this point is get a bridge loan, and they will continue with the other $75,000 to raise that, to pay off the loan. So the 25, if you want to say it's for the purchase of the property, we can say that. It's all the monies going into one place.
Okay. And how much have we contributed so far to this project as a city?
In 2012, the city contributed $100,000. And so the total would be $125,000 after tonight's vote.
Okay. And are there other partners involved in this project? How many other partners are we dealing with?
The marketing board was an initial partner, contributing $25,000. And I believe there were four other banks that contributed $25,000 each.
So we're the majority partner in this partnership, as far as dollars are concerned?
Yes, we are. And it's not a partnership, but as far as the flow of money, ACID was successful in getting a Brownfield grant that will go towards a majority of the demolition cost. So I think a lot of the partners' monies have been put towards anything that's not covered by the grant, and the purchase of all the different properties involved.
Okay. And with the shortage of being $100,000 short, and we're contributing $25,000 if this passes, did ACID do their due diligence to try to seek other partners to participate, to put their part of the funds into this?
Yes, they did. And unfortunately, I don't have that in front of me. But I do know that they approached at least five to 10 individuals/organizations. They also approached the initial partners, the banks and the marketing district. So they have approached several. There is, I would say, two to three potential leads that could really turn into something. And then the other items is that, as this has gained momentum now and is actually starting to move forward, I think we may start to see interest from developers or people wishing to purchase the property as well. So that could be another good sign for this project.
Okay. So in your opinion, do you think this $25,000 that we're going to contribute is going to be a benefit to the city as we move forward?
As I've had discussions with the ACID board and with Randy specifically, I've communicated counsel's desire to see a good return on the investment. That the goal... There were several goals, and some of them will easily be accomplished, but some of them, we need to make sure we keep in mind as well. So the goal of taking down a dilapidated building, well, that's going to occur. And so that goal will happen. And cleaning up that corner for pedestrian traffic, to try to pull them from the visitor center to the downtown area. I think taking down the building and making it shovel-ready will be a very positive step in that direction. The bigger goals that we're going to have to keep in mind is that we were hoping probably for retail on the lower level, and maybe offices or some other type of use on the upper levels. It could be tempting to sell it for different types of uses, and so we just need to make sure that we don't have to have retail, but we also want to make sure we get a really good use of that property as well. And I know that the ACID board has been very receptive to that information from city council.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for clarifying that with me, because as you know, I was not for us contributing another $25,000 to this project. I just wanted to make sure that we were doing the best that we can do as a city to make sure that we're getting a great return on our investment overall for the entire community. And I wanted to make sure that ACID had at least tried to exhaust all of their resources before we just divvied up the extra $25,000. So thank you for clarifying that for me.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Coleman. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, mayor. Want to follow up with Charlie. I want to thank staff, Heather especially, working with Randy, keeping that project moving forward. It's been a long, tough project, and I do appreciate the other facts that you pointed out, that not only is it an economic development project, it's a blight issue. We're fixing a blighted building in our community that's been probably the focus of staff for the last five or six years. What are we going to do with that building? How are we going to make that feasible? And if the city doesn't take a good, strong lead in these type of projects, they're never going to be successful. I do want people to keep in mind that ACID is a leader, we're just a partner in this, and there's partners that are doing in-kind services, not just financial, county being one. So there's more partners than the ones that were named. But I do appreciate your diligence in moving this project forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Stefano?
I also want to thank you. Great project to go forward, but that corner has been a nice hole for many years, and a lot of the constituents are really going to be happy to see it gone. And I had a question. Do we have a partner yet for getting rid of the debris and all that? Did we work something out on that?
Because of the type and the amount of asbestos in the building, our impression was, since there is a likelihood that this project could receive investigation, not investigation, but an audit, the safest route was to make sure to go to the identified landfill. I think they're still trying to work through those details. I wouldn't be surprised, though, if that's where it lands up. I did get a last-minute communication from Randy today, and there may be some other items changing for the county, where they may not be able to assist as much either. So there's still some things that are changing in that picture.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stefano. And so I would also like to commend not only staff, but I'd like to commend counsel in that this has been a long-range vision for this council and councils before that. And, you know, the commitment that counsel has had, not only monetarily but emotionally and just about every other way in dealing with this project, I think says volumes for the vision that we have for economic development here in our community, and our willingness to partner with the city and try to make the downtown area a lot more attractive. And since Sixth Street is being developed as we speak, something's always happening on Sixth Street, and I think it'll just continue to do that. I'd like to commend counsel and staff as well for the vision that we have here. And so with that, I will entertain a motion for the funding of the Pink Elephant project.
If there's no further comments, I move that we approve the funding of the additional $25,000 for the Pink Elephant project.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none? Start voting, counsel. Christie?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next up, we'll move on to regular business. Business brought forward by city staff. Finance. Amanda is here, and she will be visiting with us about Resolution 15, 2014, amending ordinance 13, 2013, for the 2014 budget. Thank you, Amanda.
The resolution in front of you covers the general fund, enterprise fund, and community rec fund. Of the major items listed under the general fund, $31,600 is for the cost associated with hiring the human resource manager. Some of the training increased for some of those reasons, because this year, we did not create a human resource department. We've left it combined with the city manager. So it's increased some of those overall operations in that area. We are reallocating monies that were originally budgeted in 2013. We talked at our work session the other night that some of those projects needed to be pushed forward into '14. So this is a cleanup for some of those projects. Our software upgrade for ENCODE. It also includes $25,000 that was set aside to be put more towards the Pink Elephant project. It includes the $5,000 that went to economic development as part of the escrow money, and then $17,000 for the purchase of the Monroe right away. In the police administration department, the largest majority of those is increasing some of our operations when we weren't expecting to have to replace our chief of police, our city clerk, some of those items, and some of those that are associated with those overall training opportunities. Streets maintenance, we had one project that was budgeted in 2013 that did not get completed, so that was reallocated in 2014. Enterprise fund, we have an unforeseen sewer system infrastructure need that came out to be right around $92,000. Once the end of the construction season finishing up, and we can go through and look at those again, we may or may not need to adjust that again as well before the end of the year. And then, the tennis courts, and the community recreation fund was originally budgeted in 2013. We're pulling it forward for the final completion of that in 2014. And that pretty much sums up the majority and the main parts of that resolution.
Thank you, Amanda. Counsel, do we have any comments or questions of Amanda? Rusty?
If there's no questions, I move that we approve Resolution 15, 2014, amending ordinance 13, 2013, for the 2014 budget.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on Resolution 15, 2014? Seeing none? Start voting, counsel. Christie?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next up, we'll move on to city manager legal. Funding for the Pink Elephant project. Heather?
As ACID has worked on their negotiations for the purchase of Sick and Twisted, we held a closed session in regards to what the role of the city should be, and if there should be an increased role for the Pink Elephant project. At that point in time, counsel indicated that it would be willing to provide an additional $25,000 towards the project, and this essentially just makes that official. As an update, ACID has closed with Sick and Twisted, and they are the current owners of the building, which means they own everything they would need to own. And hopefully, their goal is to work towards demolition before winter time. But we have had discussion, they will give us a timeframe of when that will happen, as well as visit door-to-door for the businesses in that immediate area to make sure they're aware of it and can let their... The people who shop and eat in those locations are aware of it as well. So there will be an extensive outreach once that project moves forward. So for tonight, it's an issue of if counsel would like to make a motion to move forward with the additional $25,000.
Thank you, Heather. Counsel, do we have any questions or comments for Heather? Charlie?
Mayor, I had some comments. I want to thank our city manager for kind of riding on this project, because this has been a project that's been... We've been trying to get this done for, I didn't forget how many years. I bet you close to about five years, a little over, that we've been working on this. Because I think when Nathan came on, our city manager, he was working on it. So it's been taking a long time, and I think this is something that's going to ignite the economic downtown, and it's going to clean up our community, because now that Sixth Street is a major highway through our community. And as they come through there, they see this big, instead of a pink elephant, it's a white elephant out there that we could probably take away and probably clean up. So I want to thank our staff for riding hard on this and making sure it happens. And hopefully, we can knock it down this winter. So, thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Greco. Counselor Coleman?
Yes, Heather. In our closed session, I was under the impression that the extra $25,000 would be for the purchase of that building and not just for the project. Was I wrong in interpreting it that way? And I want to know, what are the funds being used for?
It's somewhat hard to separate it out, in that we have this spreadsheet of what the demolition costs are going to be, what the cost to purchase all of the properties were, and what the remaining amount was for Sick and Twisted. As we reviewed the numbers, it became clear that the gap that ACID had in what the anticipated cost, including to still purchase Sick and Twisted, and what revenues he had, was about $100,000. And so you could say that's a $100,000 gap to purchase the building, or you could say it's a $100,000 gap for some other part of the project. But the funds were needed, and what he has done, what Randy has done up to this point is get a bridge loan, and they will continue with the other $75,000 to raise that, to pay off the loan. So the 25, if you want to say it's for the purchase of the property, we can say that. It's all the monies going into one place.
Okay. And how much have we contributed so far to this project as a city?
In 2012, the city contributed $100,000. And so the total would be $125,000 after tonight's vote.
Okay. And are there other partners involved in this project? How many other partners are we dealing with?
The marketing board was an initial partner, contributing $25,000. And I believe there were four other banks that contributed $25,000 each.
So we're the majority partner in this partnership, as far as dollars are concerned?
Yes, we are. And it's not a partnership, but as far as the flow of money, ACID was successful in getting a Brownfield grant that will go towards a majority of the demolition cost. So I think a lot of the partners' monies have been put towards anything that's not covered by the grant, and the purchase of all the different properties involved.
Okay. And with the shortage of being $100,000 short, and we're contributing $25,000 if this passes, did ACID do their due diligence to try to seek other partners to participate, to put their part of the funds into this?
Yes, they did. And unfortunately, I don't have that in front of me.
Downtown and it's going to clean up our community because now that Sixth Street is a major highway through our community and as they come through there, they see this big, instead of a pink elephant, it's a white elephant out there.
[laughing]
That we could probably take away and probably clean up. So I want to thank our staff for riding hurt on this and making sure it happens. And hopefully, we can knock it down this winter. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Gregel. Councilor Coleman?
Yes, Heather, in our closed session, I was under the impression that the extra 25,000 would be for the purchase of that building and not just for the project. Was I wrong in interpreting it that way? And I want to know what are the funds being used for?
It's somewhat hard to separate it out in that we have this spreadsheet of what the demolition costs are going to be, what the cost to purchase all of the properties were, and what the remaining amount was for Sick and Twisted. As we reviewed the numbers, it became clear that the gap that ACID had in what the anticipated costs, including to still purchase Sick and Twisted, and what revenues he had, was about $100,000. And so you could say that's a $100,000 gap to purchase the building, or you could say it's a $100,000 gap for some other part of the project. But the funds were needed and what he has done, what Randy has done up to this point, is get a bridge loan, and they will continue with the other 75,000 to raise that to pay off the loan. So the 25, if you want to say it's for the purchase of the property, we can say that. All the money's going into one place.
Okay. And how much have we contributed so far to this project as a city?
In 2012, the city contributed 100,000. And so the total would be 125,000 after tonight's vote.
Okay. And are there other partners involved in this project? How many other partners are we dealing with?
The marketing board was an initial partner, contributing 25,000. And I believe there were four other banks that contributed 25,000 each.
So we're the majority partner in this partnership as far as dollars are concerned?
Yes, we are. And it's not a partnership, but as far as the flow of money, ACID was successful in getting a brownfield grant that will go towards a majority of the demolition costs. So I think a lot of the partners' monies have been put towards anything that's not covered by the grant and the purchase of all the different properties involved.
Okay. And with the shortage of being 100,000 short, and we're contributing 25,000 if this passes, did ACID do their due diligence to try to seek other partners to participate to put their part of the funds into this?
Yes, they did. And unfortunately, I don't have that in front of me. But I do know that they approached at least five to 10 individuals/organizations. They also approached the initial partners, the banks and the marketing district. So they have approached several. There is, I would say, two to three potential leads that could really turn into something. And then the other items is that as this has gained momentum now and is actually starting to move forward, I think we may start to see interest from developers or people wishing to purchase the property as well. So that could be another good sign for this project.
Okay. So in your opinion, do you think this 25,000 that we're going to contribute is going to be a benefit to the city as we move forward?
As I've had discussions with the ACID board and with Randy specifically, I've communicated council's desire to see a good return on the investment. There were several goals, and some of them will easily be accomplished, but some of them, we need to make sure we keep in mind as well. So the goal of taking down a dilapidated building, well, that's going to occur. And so that goal will happen. And cleaning up that corner for pedestrian traffic to try to pull them from the visitor center to the downtown area. I think taking down the building and making it shovel-ready will be a very positive step in that direction. The bigger goals that we're going to have to keep in mind is that we were hoping probably for retail on the lower level and maybe offices or some other type of use on the upper levels. It could be tempting to sell it for different types of uses. And so we just need to make sure that we don't have to have retail, but we also want to make sure we get a really good use of that property as well. And I know that the ACID board has been very receptive to that information from city council.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for clarifying that with me because, as you know, I was not for us contributing another 25,000 to this project. I just wanted to make sure that we were doing the best that we can do as a city to make sure that we're getting a great return on our investment overall for the entire community. And I wanted to make sure that ACID had at least tried to exhaust all of their resources before we just divvied up the extra 25,000. So thank you for clarifying that for me.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilor Coleman. Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Want to follow up with Charlie. I want to thank staff, Heather especially, working with Randy, keeping that project moving forward. It's been a long, tough project, and I do appreciate the other facts that you pointed out, that not only is it an economic development project, it's a blight issue. We're fixing a blighted building in our community that's been probably the focus of staff for the last five or six years. What are we going to do with that building? How are we going to make that feasible? And if the city doesn't take a good, strong lead in these type of projects, they're never going to be successful. I do want people to keep in mind that ACID is a leader. We're just a partner in this, and there's partners that are doing in-kind services, not just financial, county being one. So there's more partners than the ones that were named. But I do appreciate your diligence in moving this project forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson. Councilor Stefano?
I also want to thank you. It's a great project to go forward, but that corner has been a nice over for many years. And a lot of the constituents are really going to be happy to see it gone. And I had a question. Do we have a partner yet for getting rid of the debris and all that? Did we work something out on that?
Because of the type and the amount of asbestos in the building, our impression was since there is a likelihood that this project could receive investigation, not investigation, but an audit, the safest route was to make sure to go to the identified landfill. I think they're still trying to work through those details. I wouldn't be surprised, though, if that's where it lands up. I did get a last-minute communication from Randy today, and there may be some other items changing for the county where they may not be able to assist as much either. So there's still some things that are changing in that picture.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Stefano. And so I would also like to commend not only staff, but I'd like to commend council in that this has been a long-range vision for this council and councils before that. And, you know, the commitment that council has had, not only monetarily, but emotionally, and just about every other way in dealing with this project, I think says volumes for the vision that we have for economic development here in our community and our willingness to partner with the city and try to make the downtown area a lot more attractive. And since Sixth Street is being developed as we speak, something's always happening on Sixth Street, and I think it'll just continue to do that. I'd like to commend council and staff as well for the vision that we have here. And so with that, I will entertain a motion for the funding of the Pink Elephant Project.
If there's no further comments, I move that we approve the funding of the additional 25,000 for the Pink Elephant Project.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion to second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none? Start voting, council. I need one. Okay. Kristi?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And so now we will move on to the first reading on ordinance number 12, 2014, and ordinance establishing the employee pay plan. Heather?
The pay plan essentially is unchanged from last year. The only change that we have included is to include the human resources manager position. The only other item in regards to the pay plan is, as council approved for this current budget year, we will still be moving forward with a market analysis. Depending on what the outcome of that analysis is, we may have future changes that might need to be made to the job classifications. But essentially, this is the first reading. Your next meeting would have the public hearing. And every employee within the city organization fits somewhere in these job classifications. And if we hire any new ones, this is what we use, and we place them within the job classifications.
Thank you, Heather. Counsel, do we have any questions or comments of Heather about the pay plan? Councilor Gregel?
No, no, I don't, Mary. But this, like she said, this is a first reading to set it for a public hearing. No comments. I'll make the motion that we pass ordinance number 2000, ordinance number 12, 2014, on first reading and set it for a public hearing on October the 15th at 7:00 or sooner after.
I second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on ordinance number 12, 2014? Seeing none? Start voting, council.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next up is the first reading on ordinance number 13, 2014, and ordinance adopting the proposed 2015 budget. Heather?
So I'm sure this is a project that Amanda will be very happy for us to be finished with. And so tonight's reading is very important and very exciting. It's somewhat different, though, than what we've done in the past. I plan to review what the ordinance is, the budget, and wait for you guys to vote. At the same time, following the work session, there was some interest in some additional spending in the CIP. And so once you've voted on the information presented here, I can share a little bit of what those potential numbers would look like. And if there's an agreement with those numbers, we will modify the numbers for the public hearing and the final reading of the ordinance. But in order to try to keep it somewhat organized, I'll focus just on what's in the council packet for right now. Essentially, this is an annual budget. It's a very important process, and it's something that the city tries to make as transparent as possible. The budget sets out the functions of what the city will be for the next year. A lot of times, it's very much the same as what it has been in previous years, unless you're looking to add services or cut services. If you go line item by line item, there's very little changes. Obviously, throughout the year, staff always keeps an eye on what their spending is, and also if there's any opportunities to realize efficiencies or to reduce redundancies or anything like that. So it's not something that we just look at at one time and put it on a shelf. It's something that we use throughout the year. In regards to this year's budget, overall, we anticipate the revenues to increase. And we've actually had our revenue projection be a little less conservative. It's still conservative by anyone's standards. But I think after several years of seeing that this is somewhat of the rate that we can anticipate, Amanda's letting us put 2% more in there, and something she felt more comfortable with. Council has also given staff direction to start spending down the unassigned fund balance. I think we're still going to continue to have some discussions about this, but I think from a public perception perspective, this is very positive. I know you guys have heard from the public of you don't necessarily want too big of a fund balance, and those monies could be used for projects to benefit the community. And I know you've heard those comments, and you're trying to be responsible, making sure we have enough fund balance, but also be receptive and responsible to the citizens out there. And so I think this direction was very positive. Public Works is continuing to try to work at maintaining and upgrading city streets. Combined with trying to spend down the fund balance, I think that was one of the priorities as we looked at additional funding. The police department will be bringing the K-9 program back. The K-9 program will only be used in the area of drug enforcement, not what some people may envision where they are with the officer at all times. We also changed this budget to centralize our technology expenses. We hope that this will help us start to maybe create a little bit of a fund that can help us with the unanticipated IT items. The enterprise fund, we were very happy to see that the utility rates could remain at the increase they were set out two years ago. We did not need to do any additional increases or changes on top of that. It is staff's intent, with council direction, to continue the push for the environmental awareness. There were some minor changes in the budget that will help us better promote some of our recycling, the green program, and also manage the operations that that promotion creates. The water treatment plant with the filter situation has created a significant impact. We are fortunate that those repairs can be blended into the budget and not require an increase in the fees. It's something we will continue to monitor closely. It's also something where we will continue to see if there's other options from a supplier perspective out there. We were very uncomfortable having to be at the mercy of just one company and what their timeframes were. When we're dealing with water for a community, it's not a very comfortable position to be in. The other issues we have that we need to monitor is the mandatory items. We've got arsenic out there that is still to be determined, and the water regulations. So at a staff level, we will continue to monitor those and make sure that we have the appropriate resources to address what the outcome may be. In regards to the recreation fund, we will be able to start meeting some of the unmet capital needs because the debt payment for the facility was paid in full. So this should free up a little bit more funds to address items in the recreation area. So essentially, before you tonight is a budget that we've worked on over the last couple of months. It contains all of the discussions we've had from the work sessions up to that last work session. So at that last work session's when we discussed also the K-9 program and some of those items. What it does not contain, and we will have this discussion once you vote, is the additional projects we might be able to fit into it from the fund balance. So your vote will amend those numbers after we have that discussion for the next meeting. And if there's any questions, I can answer them.
Thank you, Heather. Counsel, do we have any questions or comments? Councilor Gregel?
I didn't have a question. I had a comment. When you speak of spending down the fund balance, it's not like council's going to go out on a spending spree. I think we still need to maintain a strong fund balance. But I think there's a lot of streets out there that need repair. And I'm talking about the blacktopping, not the sidewalks and stuff. So I think that's one area that I think that council strongly thinks about, taking some of that money and putting it back into the streets. And we're constantly getting people telling us that our streets are bad and stuff. And even though we have increased that largely, I think an additional amount, and I know that you pointed out that we have only one person that does the streets for us, so it's kind of hard to put so many projects in front, you know, annually. So I think that's one thing. And like I said, once again, I want to express that we're not going on any shopping spree. And I know Amanda's keeping our feet to the fire where we still have to maintain, because the economy out there is still uncertain. And I think to have a strong, strong fund balance is very important.
And I think it's really important to emphasize that, you know, we have the Tabor requirements, and we have the requirements in our charter. And those are just bare minimums. And council was very clear that we need to have a fund balance that is above that. And the example of the filters for the water treatment plant are a perfect example of that, that there are times that there's an unanticipated item that comes up, and we need to be able to address those and still be fiscally safe. And so I think these are extremely important conversations. And it's important for people to realize that you're being responsive, but then you're also being responsible for the fiscal health as well.
Thank you, Councilor Gregel. Councilor Johnson?
I'd like to commend staff, Amanda and her staff, all the department heads. Budget time is always a stressful time for everyone, especially Amanda. And you were in the middle of an audit at the same time you were doing the budget, so a little added pressure there. Pat, you did a great job with the breakdown on the CIP and how we classified that. I appreciate the extra help there. I think our staff did a tremendous job with the budget, listened to council's expectations and our vision. And I think our staff took the ball and ran with it. As Charlie said, we're looking at spending down some of our fund balance on things that our citizens really believe that we need, and we've been getting the feedback from our citizens. And streets is the number one thing, and we're committing extra funding to that. Also, our K-9 unit, the police department on their video equipment. There's a bunch, IT, parking wreck, there's some issues with some of the facilities. So we're spending the money on things that are recognizable to our people and the complaints that we've heard. So we're addressing the complaints of our citizens. And I believe you guys took our vision and did a very good job with it. And I thank the entire staff for that.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson. Anyone else? Councilor Coleman?
Yes, I would just like to say a comment to the entire staff at the city. I mean, I looked at this budget probably about three different times, and I was just trying to find something that was wrong. And I couldn't really find anything that was wrong. And I'm good at finding things that are wrong with a budget. And this is just a sign that we have true leaders in key positions throughout our city. And this is a sign of dedicated teamwork and everyone working together in your staff. So I want to commend you and thank you so very much for the hard work and dedication that you put into this.
Thank you, Councilor Coleman. Councilor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to echo what's been said up here. I'd like to thank the department heads for all their hard work over the past two, three months on this budget. And being a new council member, I appreciate the veteran counselors and the department heads as well in leading us and showing us the ropes on this. I'd also like to thank Councilor Johnson for his idea on the fund balance and how we shouldn't spend it down right away, but over a few years gradually spend it so that we can see and the public can see our added efforts to improving our streets, as well as a couple of things for the chief and the K-9 and the MVRs, that type of stuff. So again, I'd like to thank everybody for all the work they've done on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hill. And since I'm the last to speak, I think it's been said, this council has pretty much said what our sentiments are. You know, being the responsible allocation to the funds necessary to meet our priorities, I think, reflective of the hard work that staff and council have done through this. And so with that, I will ask, I'm sorry, Councilor Stefano?
I wanted to make a comment. IT is a great organization that we have. They should be commended for a lot of the work that they're doing, fiber optics, a lot of stuff. And they should be commended. Great job.
Thank you, Councilor Stefano. And with that, I will want your wishes on ordinance number 13, 2014. Counsel? Councilor Johnson?
If there's no further questions, I will move that we approve ordinance 13, 2014, adopting the proposed 2015 budget and set it for a public hearing on October 15th at 7:00 or shortly thereafter.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the first reading of ordinance 13, 2014? Seeing none? Start voting, council.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, council. And thank you, staff.
At this time, Mayor, can I review the handout?
Please. Thank you.
Following the work session from last week, to summarize a little bit of the discussion and the direction that staff believed that council provided, there was two goals that are related, but somewhat separate at the same time. The first one was what we've touched on a little bit, in that we need to maintain a fiscally safe fund balance. And at the point where we look at 2015 and 2016, that there may have been some funds that we could use for additional projects and still maintain an appropriate balance. And council wanted to be responsive to the comments in the community of not getting too high of a fund balance and making sure that we're making good use of those funds. And so that was one part of the discussion. The other part is if you look at the timeframe for our fund balance, there is a dip where it does drop down closer to the 18%, down from 27%. And you have a dip in 2017, 18, and 2019. And so the other part of the discussion was maybe trying to lessen that dip a little bit and to look at ways for that. So following that work session, Amanda, Pat, and I sat down and really took a look at the CIP. We wanted to make sure we were still utilizing the prioritization and those concepts. At the same time, Pat's knowledge of how these projects, especially from a street and enterprise perspective, fit together. So sometimes we may have had a project that was ranked a little bit higher than one that we picked, but because it had to happen after one of the other ones that was happening in a previous year, we couldn't necessarily move it up. So there was some items like that that were going on. An example is you've got Eighth Street, which we have started. It would be very challenging to start another large project like First Street at the same time. And so we kind of have one ending and then the other beginning. There's intersections we wouldn't want to do until we do the street or the infrastructure that was scheduled as well. So we really tried to keep an eye open for that as we were moving through this. Finally, this is something where we're going to have to test this out a little bit to see how accurate we are in what we estimate the construction timeframe to be and how much one vendor will be able to accomplish. So we are adding some additional, but we know that there may be some limitations on that as well. So we were working with a lot of different dynamics. And when we started working on it, we had somewhere, if we added it to where it currently either wasn't budgeted, it was unfunded, we considered those, we were adding it to the CIP. If it was something where we shifted something and we just shifted things to backfill, that's what the shifted column is capturing. So the first thing we looked at when we sat down was doing more on the maintenance. And these are numbers that Pat feels comfortable with, that we would be able to accomplish with the suppliers that we have. It essentially would keep the 150,000 every other as we had it, and it would add 150 in the one-off year of 2016. And we looked at maybe trying to do 150 for 2018, but it was going to drop that fund balance probably almost down to 12% or 15%. So we wanted to wait and see. That's all the way out to 2018. And so there's plenty of time that we can modify that if we're still doing okay, the economy's doing okay. So, you know, we just did 50,000 for 2018. We moved the Richardson main to Second, which was previously unfunded, to 2016. We added the New Parks Office, which was previously unfunded for 2015. We did the police, the video items for 2015. And we added for 2019, but it's kind of related to backfilling, once I talk to you about what we shifted, Lambert Clark to Carroll, because that was previously unfunded. The projects we shifted, so really, if you could envision that spreadsheet for the streets, we shifted a lot of those projects forward. The only reason we didn't give you a clean copy tonight is in case there's any more changes. I'm not having to have Pat run through the routine of changing everything. But one of the items Pat really wanted to do was try to get as much of Eighth Street done and shift it into 2015. We're not going to still be able to get all of it, but he thinks we could at least go further. And so since that's a project that's already going to be existing, let's try to get as much of it done as possible. So that shifted about 150 from 2016 up to 2015. We then also shifted up to backfill for that, essentially. The intersection for Murphy and Mullins up- and Mullins up to 2016, the intersection for Clark, Weber, and Oliver up to 2018. And then we moved what was previously scheduled in 2019 up to 2016 was the Washington Edition Drainage Engineering Design Phase 1. This is something that we were going to go after a grant for something in 2015. This can be a grant as well, so we wanted to time it in 2016 to make sure to make the most use of the city funds. So we moved that from 2019 up to 2016. The next two items were ones that were directly related to trying to lessen that curve. So one of those is the streets loader, which was previously scheduled for 2017. We moved that up to 2015. And then we had two IT items that were previously scheduled for 2017, and we moved them up to 2015. Now, you might ask, why didn't we move more? And the answer to that is if you look at a facility or if you look at your fleet, if you fast-forward your replacement before they're needed for replacement, and in IT perspective as well, you're just accelerating your costs without the items necessarily needing to be replaced. So the other items that were scheduled for 2017 and 2018 probably need to remain there and not move up too far. Talking to Amanda with the other idea that Counselor Johnson brought up as far as maybe dedicating some of the funds for those items in 2017 that are large items, I think she felt most comfortable with trying to get, let's get through this year, and then as we address the CIP, if that's still something we want to do, we won't want to move more projects up, but we can maybe look at dedicating some of those funds the next time around. So it's a very good idea. It's one, though, that we want to see how everything shakes out and where everything lands. The only other items that are going to look slightly different when you get your clean copy for the CIP, it turned out that we were accidentally double-budgeting for some of our projects that we have not yet completed for 2014. So as we use the new format for the CIP, we had included some of the 2014 that we know are probably going to carry over, and those were showing up in those numbers. Amanda had already budgeted for those in 2014, so we were essentially almost double-budgeting. We're still going to show them as being done in 2015, but they're going to not be calculated to be rebudgeted. Those would be budget amendments to carry the money forward type of thing. So that will look a little bit different. But I believe we wanted to keep them in the CIP because it also can show both the public and the city council all the work that's occurring in one year. And even though those were previously funded in 2014, it's still work that's occurring. The other part is some of those projects have begun, so there is a chance that some of them might be completed before the end of the year as well. So we'll keep that updated as we move along. And with that, I'll take any input. If you look at the table, you can see what the previous fund balance was. That's when we had our work session. Those were what the numbers were. And then by either the additional or the shifted, what that changes the fund balance to.
Thank you, Heather. Counsel, do we have any questions? Counselor Johnson?
Just comments. It wasn't that long ago, last week, we had this work session, and it looks like a lot of work went into this plan. We hashed a lot of it out that night. But the idea of moving things forward, not just spending the money, has solved our issue for our dip years, and that was kind of hard to wrap myself around, getting that concept that just moving some of those. But it looks like, you know, the moving the loader forward softened the blow in 17. The percentage in 2017 looks manageable now and something that is easy to deal with. So not just spending a little extra money, but shifting some projects forward, looks like it's going to have a big impact on our improvements. And I think you guys did a terrific job in the short period of time, and it looks like you solved the dip issue with moving projects forward. And I commend staff again for getting this done in such short time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Grego?
Yeah, I just wanted, on one of these items here, on additional projects, tell me a little bit more about the new Parks Office.
And I probably should have pictures, because if you have not been inside the Parks Office, it could be surprising. It's an older building. It's definitely not ADA accessible. It's something where we've tried to make use of it as a storage and an office space, and you know, you have some clutter and you have several desks put together and items such as that. The other item you have with the Parks Office is, for a long time, we've been hearing from the community the need for a public restroom. And what we did is we did a temporary measure with the ADA accessible porta potty out there. If we build a new facility, which it's been listed as unfunded, but if we build the new facility, we can have somewhat similar to what we have with this building, where there's a bathroom on the outside of the building that could help serve the public as well.
So where is this Parks Office at?
It's at the cemetery. I'm sorry. It's at the cemetery.
Okay. That's where you're at?
I'm sorry.
You're talking about parks, and this is the cemetery area, right?
The building is located in the cemetery.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Grego. Thank you, Counselor Grego. Counselor Vehill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to echo what Counselor Johnson said, all the hard work in the past week on this. But I'm also tempted to say and maybe recommend to council, if you look at the new fund balance for 2015, 2016, 24.46 and 24.09, I'm kind of almost a little bit saying maybe we can spend a little bit more. Maybe on 2015, go to 23.5, and 2016, go down to 23%. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vehill. Anyone else?
And just a staff perspective, we will obviously take whatever direction council decides. The only issue we would run into is a little bit of a workload issue on the streets would be a little bit of the construction season issue. So I don't know, you know, I don't know if we should replace items sooner, and it gets into that kind of discussion, or if you would want to do more of the earmarking for some of the items.
We could go with, I would say, we could go with earmarking, or the projects don't have to be streets.
Well, if you look at facilities or look at your CIP, you let me know what you think.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Vehill. You know, in looking at this, staff, I think it's, you need to be complimented in the fact that just about every department got a little bit of something. You spread the wealth with the fund balance and the way you approached that. Yeah, maybe 24, the new fund balance may be a little high, but then when you look at 2017, it might be something that staff's recommendation, that may be a wise decision to kind of keep it that high, because all of a sudden, we're going to be looking at in 2017, a fund balance that isn't quite so high because of the issues that we foresee in 2017. But I do also want to commend staff for the work they've done here on behalf of council and their wishes. And so that, are you, did you have anything else, Heather or council? Do we have any other comments? And if not, well?
The only other item I want to clarify is, we obviously have other fund balances when it came to the enterprise funds and the Parks and Recreation Funds. When we looked at those, it looked as if a majority of the projects over the five-year term will kind of get dealt with. So we wanted to be protective of remaining in the mindset of using those funds to fund those types of projects. So you'll notice we didn't necessarily pull very many enterprise or Parks and Rec or those types. It's general fund-type projects that we listed here. The other fund balances were not as big as what the unassigned general fund balance was. So I probably should have pointed that out in the beginning, too, to clarify that.
Thank you, Heather. With that, sir?
Just from a staff perspective, I think it would be helpful to find out that council is in general supportive of the CIP changes as presented, because then those can get worked into the 2015 budget that comes back for final reading, so that that's ready for the next meeting.
Eric, would you liken a motion to accept the changes? Is that what you're after?
A motion to direct staff to incorporate the changes into the 2015 budget when it comes up for final hearing.
Thank you, Eric. Counsel?
Also move.
I have, Counselor Greg, oh. Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the changes? If not, start voting, counsel. I'm missing one. Kristi?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. And so next up are committee reports. Who has a committee report?
I have it.
Counselor Grego?
On my airport committee report, I'm going to shift it over to Counselor Johnson, who was, who made that meeting for me. I wasn't able to make it.
Thank you, Counselor Grego. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Grego. Let me find my notes on that one. So we had a, I attended an airport board meeting for last week. The major discussion was their new terminal. They had some issues with the building there, and I have the minutes, and I gave Mr. Grego a copy, if anybody wants copies of minutes. It looks like they got all their issues resolved, and they're moving forward. Few construction issues that held them up. Also, yesterday, the airport board met with Senator Bennett and discussed some of the aviation issues that are going on, mainly the 1500-hour restriction is what they went through. And I was able to attend that also. And I would really like to commend the airport board. It's so refreshing to go into a board meeting with a senator there, and you have very straightforward, good conversation with the senator. Mr. Tim Gallagher is very knowledgeable. This community is extremely lucky to have someone like him on that board that knows the issues, and he knows how to, he can present ways to solve the issues, and just good ideas and good information for the senator. Also, Lynn Elthing and Carol Osborne, good input. And that's a terrific board. Those people are very knowledgeable about what's going on at the airport. I would also like to thank Charlotte Bobiski for getting the senator to listen to the airport board, bringing him in and giving us the time. He originally was only scheduled for 10 or 15 minutes with the airport board, but it was such a good conversation, he stayed for about a half hour. And that was because of the intelligent, knowledgeable conversation. And it was nice to be in a board meeting like that. And I would just like to commend that whole, that whole meeting, everyone involved in it. They represented our community extremely well and gave the senator some really good ideas and good direction on moving forward. And with that, that is it with the airport stuff. I do have one more committee report.
Let me make a couple of comments. Counselor Johnson, I appreciate you attending this, but I know the mayor had some concerns about our flights last time, and this is one issue that we have been working hard to try to make sure that we get the good number of flights out of here. And thanks to, like Mr. Johnson said, Charlotte Bobiski has really rode this pretty good, and she is, she got the attention of Senator Bennett to come down here, because this is a problem not only for Alamosa, but the whole San Luis Valley, and it is an economic problem. And he's got to go back and try to work something out with the FAA and try to resolve this. And it's like Johnson says, all these people working together. Also, he gave support on these UAVs that we discussed. He's supporting that also. Hopefully, that'll bring some industry into our, into Alamosa and into the valley. So thank you once again.
Thank you, Counselor Grego. Counselor Johnson?
One more real quick.
Absolutely.
I have the tree, we had a tree board meeting today. Nothing dramatic. They finished their, they finished updating their recommended tree list, got everything finished up on that. In about a month, it'll be available on the website. They just need to update the web. So look for that fairly soon. Discuss some possible grants. Still working on the tree inventory and how to get that lined out, and basically, that was it.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Anyone else with a committee report? I attended the Justice Center Task Force meeting. Heather and the chief were there, and they're still working on trying to get all their ducks in a row and all their people together, the architects, the information that's necessary for the new Justice Center that they're planning. And so their next meeting will be November, I believe, the 22nd or 23rd, if I'm not mistaken. So I plan to, I'm sure Heather and the chief and I will be there representing the city, but we'll see how that goes. Other than that, anyone else? If not, we'll move on to staff announcements. Heather?
We held the meeting for the property owners for the Special Improvement District on Monday. I believe we had approximately 10 in attendance. It was not necessarily everyone. There were some questions regarding the timeframe, questions of what went into the construction budget, but it was a very low-key meeting. Not a lot of questions that we didn't anticipate. There were some, and mostly it's those who have the corner lots that have obvious concerns over the project. But I would say probably the majority of the other attendees are those that own property that are in the middle of the block or those types of things and are supportive of it. So it was purely informational. We answered some questions, and I think the meeting probably only lasted about 30 minutes. So it was very low-key. We also made it clear that if they come up with any questions, they can contact us, and we'd be more than willing to answer any questions that they have. I met with Dr. Simone with Trinidad State Junior College, and I think she's also met with the mayor. I will be sending her the list of some upcoming meetings, and she will plan to attend a council meeting just to provide an update on what's occurring with their campuses and to also be proactive in answering any questions that might start coming up in regards to the funding that they've received and moving forward with for the expansion at the current facility, while still doing a phased-in approach for their long-term campus growth on the, on the other side of Alamosa. So they are still very positive and still looking very good at what their future is. And so she wanted to be able to come in and do a presentation before council, and again, she's there to answer any questions of, people have questions of why are they expanding now if they're planning on moving? And part of that is they are really fitting their capacity right now, and it's funds that have been approved. So they do need to take advantage of that without knowing what the future might hold. And so they need to make sure to address their current capacity issues while still being fiscally responsive for the future. So I look forward to having her come and give a presentation on that.
I was also invited to a meeting, and when I asked who was going to attend, I thought of Heather attending with me. And of course, Dr. Simone said, well, I'm meeting with her an hour before you. And I says, well, why don't we just go together? And she says, well, I want to get two perspectives, one from the city manager and one from just a regular citizen. So I was very happy to meet with her, and I think the main thrust of our conversation was if she hears anything negative out in the community about Trinidad State Junior College, please bring it to her attention so she can deal with issues, if they have any issues at all with the community or community members at all or any organization at all. So she's very open, and I guess the expansion that they're looking at is going to, like you say, going to take care of the present student load, and they're looking at a science lab and a few other improvements. So I think that'll be great long before they can build that new campus that they're looking at, which is probably a $20,000 or $30,000 project out what, southwest of town. But that's on hold right now. But it was a- But it was a great conversation. Thank you, Heather.
The other discussions we've had with Trinidad and Adam State is just from a partnership perspective, if there's any areas we can work together that, that are appropriate and make sense, that benefit us, because when, when one is succeeding, we're all succeeding. And so some of the items include, you know, if there's certain banners that can be put up during certain special times of the year, items like that, or putting links on our website to make sure any visitors to our website are being directed there as well, and those types of items. So I think it's a very good partnership we have with our educational facilities here in this community. Just as an FYI, something that staff has been talking about, and will probably be a change sometime in the next month or two, is we will probably start attaching the minutes from your appointed advisory boards. I still think it's very critical for you to provide the updates in the meetings, and you probably get a lot more knowledge from what you share during those, but then just from a transparency perspective, because the public accesses those packets as well, we will just attach those minutes. There will be a delay, because they're going to be the approved minutes, but that way, we're still being transparent with all the activities that are occurring with the city organization. And then lastly, if you could maybe have a brief conversation on two members to appoint for the council Economic Development Committee, and two members for the Comp Plan Committee, that would be great, because I think that activity's gonna pick up.
Thank you, Heather. I have had one individual that was interested, or is interested, in the Economic Development Committee, and that's Counselor Coleman, no one else has called me, and, okay, and Counselor Johnson, so you have two there. The other committee, I haven't, no one has approached me to, to be part of that committee. Those are Charlie, Counselor Grego will, anyone else, and Counselor Stefano. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for, for volunteering for those, for those committees. I appreciate that.
And let me do a quick look at staff and see if there's anything else that we have. Is there anything else? Hines, did you have anything?
I think we're good.
Okay. I, I did, I did have a, a request of Hines. Would it be possible to get a ranch update, maybe next meeting? We haven't heard anything about the ranch in quite a while, and I've, just kinda wondering what's going on out there, maybe, maybe we're taking care of all the weeds or everything, I'm not really sure, but just kind of an update would be great, Hines, if that's possible next meeting.
Hi, we've talked about that, because you've asked me to look into that, and I think we were looking at probably November, for one of the meetings in November to get an update.
That's fine, thank you very much for that, I appreciate that. All right. And with that, we'll move on to council comment. Who's got a comment? Counselor Coleman?
I have a comment. This Saturday morning, the Alamosa Youth Football League are gonna have some football games out at the Rec Center, their tackle football teams. We have two teams in Alamosa for, for the third and fourth graders, and then we have a two fifth and sixth grade teams, and I would just like to encourage you all to come out Saturday morning to the Rec Center and see some real, true football from some of our future NFL Hall of Famers.
Thank you, Counselor Coleman. Counselor Grego?
I don't know if this was a, a committee report, but I had an opportunity on Monday night to attend the aerospace road trip that the governor put together, where they traveled to rural Colorado to see how, how they can maybe pick up businesses to, to work with the aerospace. And it was, there was quite a few people there, and I was representing the, the city. And the aerospace ranks third in the nation as the space economy, so this is something really big, and the governor really wants rural Colorado involvement in it. And we had some, some business, small business people that showed up, and they were able to converse with these other people and ship cards, and maybe eventually do some work for the aerospace. But it's quite interesting, and they're trying to make this an annual thing, and not only with small businesses, but they're trying to get, like, the kids in the schools involved with all this, so it was quite interesting. And I brought some stuff here that I'll put in, we can put in the readers, in our reader file, and maybe you guys can look at it and stuff, so.
Thank you, Counselor Grego, we appreciate you being, being there on our behalf. I know there's a lot of potential for the valley and aerospace and unmanned aircraft, and it just seems like a lot of people are taking interest in Alamosa and the San Luis Valley when it comes to that, so thank you very much for that. Any other council comment? No? Seeing none? We have a need tonight for an executive session, I will entertain a motion. Counselor Johnson?
I will move that we convene to an executive session pursuant to CRS, State Statute 24-4-402 parentheses four parentheses E, to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop strategies for negotiations, and instruct negotiating, negotiators with respect to economic development.
I second it.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the executive session? If not, then we will move into executive session, and when we come back, we will move back into regular session, and no further business will be discussed. Thank you.
Gotta vote?
Gotta vote? Let's start voting. Kristi?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Kristi, and thank you, Counselor Vehill.